How you doing? I saw your momma the other day.
Really?
She looked good, alright.
She looks good though.
Yeah, she's getting around.
Yeah, looks strong.
She's off the walk or something.
Yeah.
Well, she's not taking a proper cut over her.
But that's because her knee is.
Yeah. Now she's trying to knock on it. So.
I've been taking them to the night.
Well, now she's on the. Frazzles, he called me. Why would I have friends? Why would I have friends? But so she went to the doctor today, he called it something. That'll be good. She's gonna get off of that after.
I hope she does.
So.
I didn't have them back.
Yeah. She says. Good. Fun bruise on her. Sure, that feels great.
He's talking good about you.
Thanks for that.
Hopefully they tell you how you're having the competition that I have. That works, something else.
They're at their restaurants all the time.
People miss, people miss Eric. Everybody misses people.
Train, I think. Train.
At seven o'clock, call the order, regular meeting of the city council here in Ransford, six hundred West Cleveland Boulevard, Ransford, Texas, on the second, at 7:00 PM. I'll stand for the invocation, please. Lord, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day, all the blessings, opportunities you've given us each moment. I'd like to give special blessings for all our citizens that are out there and the ones that have passed. Lord, give us the strength to do what's right, make the right decisions tonight and take care of our little ones as they're grown, to spread their, gain their knowledge and spread their wings throughout our community. Also give thanks to all our workers that work hard throughout day and night and for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's sole request. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items A, B, C, and D.
Make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 This will bring us to item number four. Consider an act on tax resale properties. A would be suit number A dash oh five dash thirty sixty-six TXA. Ransford County, Ransford Pass Independent School District, City of Ransford Pass versus Michael J. Yurich. ETA L track number two, account. NOS R one twenty-four seventy-six and oh one four nine dash three eighty-nine oh oh one dash oh oh lot one. Also block three eighty-nine original town site of Ransford Pass, Texas, Ransford Pass, Ransford County, Texas, and described in the clerk's files, number two-two-five-one-eight-seven. Deed records of Ransford County, Texas, and described in volume U two dash two, page one thirty-eight, the deed records of Ransford County, Texas, North Lamont, Ransford Pass, bid by Kerry M.A. Smith of six hundred ten dollars.
I'm mayor council, both the, the properties are on, on the map. Seven hundred North Lamont is vacant property, undeveloped. Eight thirty-three North Rife would be infill development. That's probably the more important of, of the two. Just give you a snapshot of what the neighborhood looks like. So although the city would receive but nine dollars and fourteen cents, it is an opportunity to put the property back on the tax roll. Seven hundred block of North Lamont had no assessments, no weed liens. The North Rife property has a demolition lien of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars that would be paid prior to.
Are there any questions on that property?
So North Lamont is one that's undeveloped, is that?
Yes.
And there's no, no liens, no anything?
No, not on, not on the one on North Lamont. The one on North Rife has a demolition lien.
Can I see the one on the North Rife? Can I see that?
Michael, tell me which property's been demolished. Michael, I believe it's this white one, but I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent certain because we just, we just demolished and Google Earth obviously hasn't kept up.
Hey Sylvia, is North Lamont, is that where that, you can't really drive down it?
Yes, it's an undeveloped area.
Have they made, I'm just curious, have they made mention of possibly building some houses?
No, that, that's a, that's a relatively small, it's just a small twenty-five footer.
Okay.
You, you can see it's, it's a good section of undeveloped street, so there's gonna be some investment that's required on their part.
So on the, the one on North Rife?
Here you go. That's one. That's what was there.
Okay. The one on North Rife, who is receiving the majority of the money?
Um, that's usually the school district.
School district, okay.
Yes. Usually the school district. Of the six hundred and ten dollar bid, the city's gonna receive nine dollars and fourteen cents. And on the other, the bid is a little under four thousand dollars, the city would receive eighty-one dollars and nine cents.
Okay, are we having him pay for the?
Demolition.
Demolition?
We can on item B, that's one of the stipulations that they would pay for the demolition.
Okay.
Make a motion for it.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the bids and then of course on the one on North Rife, that they pay the demolition that's owed to the city.
I will second that motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 This will bring us to item number five, consider an act on, on the amendments of the city of Ransford Animal Control Ordinance.
Um, mayor and council, we, we have been working on the animal control ordinance, the, what I'm calling the animal cruelty ordinance and cleaning up sections of our ordinance. We did have Alan Spence of the Texas Animal Control Officers come in, advise on not only the, the current state and status of our animal shelter, but also things we needed to improve, cleaning, some security measures, things like that. So this ordinance is really in an effort to not only get a current ordinance, but keep up with the municipalities around us. I do have Carol, Selena's here, who wants to add a section, and if council agrees, then you would need to amend this on the floor to add the restriction that she's asking. So Carol?
My name is Carol Selena, and I noticed that there were going to be discussions tonight about the animal control ordinance. I have an issue that I've been wanting to address for quite some time. I don't know if I, yeah, there. I'm. Okay. The animal control situation kind of flew into my face before I could address this with the former. We have a. Animal control that pertains to fowl chickens and such, and my concern is, we've got chickens all over town, which include roosters. Anyone that has chickens because they want eggs, they don't have to have a rooster. I have roosters around me and I've got recordings on my phone made from the bedroom window on the little iPhone. And at four, four-thirty in the morning, these roosters are crowing, two or three roosters, you know, and they've got seventeen or twenty chickens running loose and having babies and flying over fences. There's really, my problem is with roosters. If someone wants chickens to have eggs, fine, but they don't need roosters. Roosters often, I don't know for sure here, often need to indirectly one way or another to cockfighting. They're not necessary for the eggs, and there should be a limitation on the number of chickens that are allowed. It already says in the animal control ordinance that they should be confined and what type of structure. This is not often being followed, but I, I just would like to see you address the issue of having roosters which disturb the peace. Too many chickens. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. She's right, the only restriction on our ordinance right now, and I'm chuckling because we were emailing back and forth on Sunday or Monday about chickens. There is no restriction on roosters, and really our ordinance just says they can't run at large, you have to keep them in an enclosure and they have to be fifty feet from the nearest residential structure. So we would have to make an amendment that says no, no roosters are allowed within the city limits. And if we're gonna put a limit, five or six chickens would be what cities around us. We did look at Corpus, Sutton, Ingleside, Rockport, Portland. There's only two cities that, that restrict fowl altogether in their city limits. So it's at the pleasure of the council, and I don't raise chickens, so Alan, please feel free to jump in.
No, I'm just, I'm sitting here thinking, several years, several years ago, there was a case filed in municipal court by a neighbor against another neighbor because of a rooster that was just creating havoc. So I agree with the lady that they do cause problems.
I guess my question, if we were to put this restriction, how are we going to?
It would, it would be like everything else, people would call and say, they've got a rooster, and so we'd, we'd go issue a ticket and confiscate the rooster.
And count the chickens, or?
Well, the, the fowl, it requires a livestock permit. Every, everything that you have in the city requires a permit or registration from the animal control officer and then signed by me, and typically we take that measurement to make sure it's far enough from.
And they have the number of chickens that?
Yes.
We put a restriction on that?
No, you would have to place a restriction.
That's what I mean.
I don't know what that number is. She said she knew somebody that had twelve chickens or however.
One family in particular started out with seventeen, they were bunnies and a combination of other types. They had at least three roosters. You can tell because they all crow in a different voice. At four-thirty in the morning, I always. And I am a country girl, but I've never had chickens. I thought they started crowing when the sun came up, that's not true. But these people had seventeen to start with, at least three roosters in that group, and they've not got a lot of little baby chicks. And I know also for you that don't know, because I have babysat for some friends who had twelve hens that recently got rid of them. They had enough, they got six or seven eggs every day and not one rooster. Anyone that wants to have a few hens to get fresh eggs, I really don't wanna be that grippy, but they don't need a rooster to do that. And it does lead to other, other problems indirectly that I know goes on.
Don't they need a certain size property or?
It has to be within a certain distance from the next residential structure. They've gotta be kept in an enclosure and there's gotta be a distance requirement, but that's fifty feet, and most of our lots in town are a hundred and ten feet deep, so very easy to meet it with the backyard to backyard, neighbor to neighbor.
Do we have a record of how many of our residents have chickens?
No, the only thing we have is from the day that I started, the number of livestock permits we've issued.
Okay.
Probably some that are not in compliance.
Oh, absolutely. And, and the only thing that prompted that conversation is when Mike Sullinger was taking me around town, we came across a house who, the, the water hose was coming from next door, so is the extension cord with the goat on the front porch. There was obviously, there was obviously some code violations there. So if, if council so desires, you'd make a motion to amend with the stated stipulations on the number and if you want to not allow roosters.
I have a question Sylvia. So the property down on the harbor that's owned agricultural? We're not gonna be in any infringement on state law or anything?
No, anything that's ag, everything in these ordinances and everything around us says unless it's for husbandry, livestock, or within that classification. They still have to register, but.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, the smell and all those things, the cleanliness, at that point, really, that's the only thing we're looking for, not necessarily the rest of this stuff.
Okay.
This is for us city dwellers.
What would be the pleasure of the council on this? Rooster or no rooster?
I don't know enough to even make a recommendation to the council.
The only thing could be, you know, they're not, after hours, nuisance ordinance, I mean. But how you can you control that? It's like controlling your dog park at night.
Let, let me suggest to you that if you want, go ahead and pass these amendments as-is, and think about the rooster problem, and you can come back and always change this if you want to.
Leaving open for revision?
Just give a little thought.
What about limiting the number of chickens also? To leave that one open-ended or?
Sure.
Well, whatever you wanna do, but I'm just saying, go ahead and pass this as-is and give the others some thought.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion, we accept the amendments to the city of Ransford Pass Animal Control Ordinance.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 And with, yeah, go back and revisit this?
Yes, and just so the council is aware, after we get through with these on the second reading, which should be the second, fifteenth of September, we will be ready for adoptions and things to begin on the sixteenth of September.
This will bring us to item number six, consider an act of the city of Ransford Pass Utility Rate Fee Increase.
Council, this was in your prior packet and should have been included in the prior utility fee increases. We missed it with the way the advertisement was worded. The, the consumption is proposed to be forty cents, and as, as I discussed at our last council meeting, total with all of the fees increase as well as consumption, the average five thousand gallon per month residential customer should see about a ten dollar a month increase. That's about a five thousand dollar customer. If you use more, obviously it's gonna be more, and it is consumption based, so the more you use, the more expensive it is. I will tell you that we're in water restrictions, Corpus has increased their fee, which then Sandpat does, which then we do. So although we're gonna increase the consumption rate, it'll probably be swallowed by the surcharge that's passed on to us from everybody else.
What is the total increase in the utility bill between the EMS, the?
It's about ten dollars.
All the way?
It's about ten dollars. For your average residential customer, if you've got an irrigation system, if you're a larger commercial customer, or you have a second meter, obviously it's gonna be more. But the average residential, normal customer should see about ten dollars.
Well, I'm making a motion, we approve the rate fee increases for the utilities in Ransford Pass.
I'll second it.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
I still oppose that deal. Won't do any good though.
That brings to number seven, consider an act on the city staff to hold an online auction with Renee Bates Auctioneers for old, broken, and no longer used city property.
Well, we have a lot of that in the city. We've been dumping things at the Dbury Tank, we've been dumping things across the street, we've been dumping things in various warehouses across the city. Really, this made staff go take a cleanup, take an inventory, get rid of what we can, put some money in the coffers if possible, but really it is an attempt to clean up. That Dbury Tank has to come down at some point, and we're just, we're just using it for derelict storage. And, you know, a lot of this equipment doesn't work, it, it has no resale value. I mean, there are possibly some chairs, but for the most part, it really is an attempt just to get it off the rolls.
They're throwing that chair over there too, huh?
So yes, there's, there's, believe it or not, mayor, there's a lot of chairs throughout the city like that. I mean, my, my personal chair is the same way, and we did municipal court just also did a sweep. You know, we're not buying anything new, we're repurposing what we can, but there, there are just things that have absolutely no use or value anymore. So this is the first time we use Renee Bates, he's never been used before. So, this is the first time we use Renee Bates, he's never been used before. We were using Lemon's Auctioneers. So, we're going to try to see what, what we can do with Bates.
Bless you.
Well, let me, let me tell you that, that you need to know what items you're talking about putting up for auction, and you have to declare those items to be surplus property...
Yes.
Before you can go out for bids, or for auctions. So, you can, you, you can go ahead and authorize, I think, tonight.
Yes, we're in the process of getting the list and, and the value.
And then, then once they have the list compiled, they need to come back to you so you can declare the items to be surplus property, so.
So, do I hear a motion with provisions just mentioned?
Well, I make a motion that we authorize Renee Bates Auctioneers for the online auction of old, broken, and no longer used city property.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Bring us to item number eight, considering an act on advertising for requests for proposals on construction services for the Veterans Memorial Park.
And this is, this is just that, there are various components of Veterans Memorial that we need to get started. The equipment is due to arrive any day now at Public Works, so we have the fence to complete. Staff's going to do the water line extension. There are some parking lot improvements, there are some bollards, and some demolition of the old equipment and site preparation. So, we're looking for, obviously, we'd like locals to be able to do that. It's not difficult work, but it, there is some detailed work associated with it. So, the way the RFP is, if you can do one piece, or you can do it all. Just depends on how it comes across from the bidder.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we approve their, their request for, you know, advertising for requests for proposals on construction services for the Veterans Memorial Park.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's bring us to item number nine, considering an act on accepting a bid for design services at Community Park.
We did go out for RFP for Community Park. We do have the dog park, we do have the Frisbee Golf, we do have some other areas besides the, the park equipment. We only received one bid, and that was from Blake Jacobs Construction and Design, who I understand is a local. So, if he'd like to, if he'd like to address the council.
As I was doing, me and Sean Miller, I did put a bid together for the design on the, on implementing some of the features there at the aquatic center area. That bid is a bid just for the design, which is going to, you know, bring, bring some prints to the table, bring a vision to the table. And then, of course, there's going to be change orders, because there's electrical engineering, URPs, overheads, things like that, that are going to need to be looked at by the city. I know that on this design, we're going to, we're going to provide just about everything you need to, to move forward with this project, where any engineers or any contractors will be able to look at these sets of prints and know exactly what they do. Now, of course, they will need to be engineered. We're just putting the design together. Like I said, it's, it's a, it's a, it's basically a vision to give everybody in the City of Aransas Pass on, on the direction that you want to move forward in. In fact, I'm pretty excited about it. I feel like our kids here in the community have been robbed for a long time, this is something that's due past. It's going to be a great deal for, for the community, for the kids. I'm looking forward to trying to put something together, and if y'all want me to be your designer, I'll be glad to do it. I've got a great design team, I've got a couple of disc golf course guys that are professionals that have also designed disc golf courses, and I also have a guy from Gregory Portland named Eric Dawkins that now lives in Oregon. He's got 28 skateboards underneath his experience, his design, and implemented. Port Aransas is one of them. He actually worked for a guy out of California, Vallejo, California, that did the one in Port Aransas. So, I've got a pretty good team together. We just, I guess, need approval to move forward. And if there's any questions according to my bid, then, you know, my phone number's on there, and I'm open for any kind of questions that I might can clear up or help you with.
If you're to get the bid, how long do you think it would take to get the design?
Um, it's going to take a little bit of time, it's something that happens overnight. These guys, when they sit down to draw, you know, even just a set of basic house plans take a couple of weeks. We're talking about acres of land. So, going out there and rocking that and pulling correct measurements, I could use the Google Maps, of course, but I don't know how exact that is, and we're going to have to put some team guys out on the ground to pull, you know, correct measurements, look at the, look at the flood zoning whenever we get high tides and things like that, because some of that area back there is, you know, it's subject to have high tides. So, this is something that, that's going to take some further planning, and it could take anywhere from, you know, I, I would say four weeks to six weeks just to, just to try to be safe. And that's just, just as a guesstimate, it's not set in stone. Like I said, there's lots of different, different processes that need to take place. And once you've got measurements, and you've got the, got the layout of everything, then you can start putting it to paper and, and coming up with your prints and plans.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Sylvia, who would be working with, as far as on the design, you?
Okay. And our engineer, and our parks director. Okay.
One thing I, I, I want to kind of touch base on, I know that this stuff's going to entail parking, and, and more parking. We're going to have to implement more parking in some of that area that's designated to put some of these venues. I put in my bid that, that we will come up with a blueprint. The blueprint for parking is not going to be an engineer, it's not going to be a parking lot, it's, it's going to be a layout of a parking lot. And then, like I said, there'll be some change orders, because there's going to be questions, and there's going to be placement questions, and we're going to deal with, like I said, electrical and things like that. So, there's, there's an extensive amount of planning that's going to take place in this.
So, do I hear a motion for approval?
Well, I make a motion that we approve accepting the bid design to Blake Jacobs Construction and Design.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, because he's my friend, too. So, it's nice to have one, right? I know, right?
That, just to, just so the council understands, that does not include the electrical work on the shrimpery grounds, that's actually LNV, we've already walked the grounds, because there's some pretty intense sewer, electrical, and plumbing work to be done on that side of the road.
Let's bring us to item number 10, considering an act on the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District Bylaws by changing the member expiration dates from July 31st to September 30th.
Just some cleanup and correction on, on the bylaws, and Hope Commingore is here to address any questions.
So, the reason for this, Hope, is because why? Just to give more time?
Well, last year, you, you extended the expiration dates for four of our nine members.
Okay.
This year, five of us were up for renewal, and before we realized it, we were into budget and hadn't renewed those expiration dates, had come to you for renewal, and here we were stuck with budget time, and we didn't have a quorum anymore. So...
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Alan, can I vote on this, or since I sit on the board?
Probably should.
Should not?
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the bylaw changes for the MDD from July 31st to September 30th.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Let's bring us to item number 11, Aransas Pass Municipal Development District 2014 through the 2015 budget. A will be a public hearing, Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing to discuss and consider the MDD District 2014-2015 Budget. Sylvia, you want to address this, or, or who?
I'm Hope.
Okay.
Hope Commingore from the Municipal Development District. We have a budget proposed, and you all have the numbers in your packets, correct? We're looking at an increase in the sales tax income and the interest income for a total of 825,250 for the coming year. And expenses, we have broken those out, and we've come out with $85,850 for expenses. Now, this is just the Municipal Development District, this is not Civic Center, okay? Just MDD. There is an extra $80,000 in that figure that I just gave you that is for Civic Center maintenance. If something happens to an air conditioning unit, or anything over there in the building, the building is now starting to age, and we're anticipating there may be some major... We've reserved $80,000, put that in the budget. But it won't be spent unless it is voted on by MDD. So, this is a reserve fund in case it's needed, okay? And our bond debt service for the year will be 562,438, or $39.88. That's a given, that's a total, we have to pay that. And we have to have money in reserves to pay at least half that, because there's two payments a year. Our next payment comes up in January. We need $281,219 to pay that. Okay? The next item on the budget is the Civic Center budget deficit. This is what's anticipated to be owed for the Civic Center deficit as of the end of this month, plus one additional employee at the Civic Center. Okay? We're figuring in that salary for one more person to give her some leeway to do some sales calls to get the Civic Center used. So, that's where that money is. It leaves us with expenses higher than income by $75,000. But, right now, we have in tax pool $474,000. We have a bank account that's got almost $3,000 in it. And we have some sales tax that was just posted of nearly $80,000. We have enough money right now to pay almost all of the total bond payment that is due next year. Okay? Any questions on the budget? I think we're finally turning the corner.
And, and just so council understands, it, it is a deficit budget, but that $80,000 in, is in reserve, so there's really, they're really not in a deficit.
Only if that money's spent, will it be a deficit.
That's right, that's right. And, and we were very conservative in some of the estimates with sales tax and some of the other revenues, so don't want to scare anybody that we're already pulling other dollars out. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Commingore. Council have anything else?
Anyone in the audience have any comments? Now, I declare the public hearing closed. So, let's bring us to item B, considering an act on adoption of the budget. I'll make a motion, we approve, to approve the budget for the Municipal Development District for 2014 and 2015.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
Let's bring us to item 12, Aransas Pass Crime Control and Prevention District 2014 through 2015 budget. Let's see. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on the Crime Control and Prevention District 2014-2015 Budget. Terry, are you here to address that, or?
Yes.
You are?
Both of these, both of these are board presidents, so.
Come on down.
... Terry's head, very... ...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... around and pay it. I mean, you know, if you can pay for it, it'd be, I think, a saving along the way.
Okay, thank you, Terry. In the audience, have any questions or comments? If not, then the public hearing is closed.
I'll bring aside and be considering that on the adoption of the budget.
I make a motion that we adopt the Ranses Pass Crime Control and Prevention District 2014-2015.
I second.
All the person say aye.
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 Let's bring aside item thirteen, Public Hearing on Number Two, on proposed Ranses 2015 proposed effective tax rate.
Thank you, Mary. This is the public hearing, second public hearing on the proposed Ranses Pass fiscal year 2014-2015 budget, and the 2014-2015 proposed effective tax rate. Sylvia?
Open the public hearing for any questions on the effective tax rate. Council, we presented a balanced budget with those fees that you passed. We're proposing leaving the effective tax rate the same. There will be no increase.
Any questions by the council?
Not by the council. Yeah, nobody. No.
Any members of the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Carol Salinas, resident of Ranses Pass. I guess I just want to clarify my own mind on the water fees. First of all, have those fee increases been implemented into the projected budget?
Yes.
Okay, and then we've got, I'm just not sure I'm reading it all right. A two-fifty EMS fee, two-fifty drainage fee, then a two-fifty increase for the base fee on water, a four-dollar increase on the base fee for sewer, and then the forty cent increase per unit?
Those are, the two dollars and fifty cents, the two dollar and fifty cents, those are new fees. So that's a new fee of five dollars on your monthly utility. The other amount, the two-fifty and the four dollars, right now, we have a minimum charge of twenty-six eighty-nine, or some change. Very rarely are people anywhere near that minimum charge, so we're raising the minimum fee. It will have little to no impact for the normal user. It's going to impact those people who have vacation homes, for example, who turn things off and have a minimum bill of twenty-something dollars. That's where that impact will come. The impact to the normal Ranses Pass resident comes in the consumption portion of it, the forty cents per gallon.
So it's the forty cents per gallon, and then whatever the ceiling is per unit with a minimum fee of the two-fifty and the four dollars?
Yes.
I've got it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Let's bring aside item fourteen, considering that on proposed Ranses Pass fiscal year 2014 through 2015 budget and the 2014 through the 2015 proposed effective tax rate. Our hair a motion for approval.
Make a motion that we approve the fiscal year tax rate, or the budget for 2014 and 2015 budget and the effective tax rate of?
Point six-eight-zero-three-five-four.
There you go.
Second. All the person say aye.
Aye.
Those decimal points are very important.
I.
That was in the details. I'll bring aside item fifteen, City Manager update, Sylvia?
Well, I have a couple of items. First of all, congratulations, Vicki, for being appointed the second vice president to our TML region.
Go, Vicki.
She was voted in on Thursday. I don't even realize she knew she was nominated. I didn't know she was nominated.
The mayor's one that texted you about, what, eight-thirty?
Yeah, congratulations.
She was nominated by our Port Ranses neighbors. I'll reiterate that we are having the Citizens Academy on September the sixteenth. We've received about ten applications. There's still about fifteen slots open. For today, we're going to do a day in the life of city staff, so that's going to be an introduction to the Citizens Academy. It's going to be a real in-the-back, back scenes, what we do in the city. We are transitioning a lot of staff right now. I wanted to let the public know, let the council know. We are eliminating some positions, consolidating some positions, and it is in an attempt to be more efficient, always having to do more with less, or with what we have, when there's always more push and pull on the resources that we have. Ron will be out on? In training. I will be out September the twelfth through September the sixteenth for National City Manager Conference, and I believe that is the update.
All right. Any questions on this? And I'll bring us to my favorite over here, citizen comments. You have three minutes to state your name and your business, and the floor is now open.
How y'all doing? My name is Alfred. I have one question that I just found out today. I'm on a race here. I'm on property, my kids, nephews, and everything, but I came to the city inspector because I got this property beside me. All I want to build is a, like something for a shade, and let me tell you why. My son's a coach here, and he does benefits. Sometimes it rains, so I wanted to build something on this extra property so they don't get wet when they're barbecuing. Well, I find out that I can't build anything on this property. They tell me I got to get it replanted, that I didn't know anything about it. When I pay taxes, now it says lot fifteen and sixteen, and I call the people, they want fifteen hundred dollars just to do whatever they do surveying. And then if it's bigger than ten by twelve, I have to get windstorm, which that's another seven or eight hundred dollars, and the little thing I want's maybe three hundred bucks. So I never heard about this ordinance, you know, that I have this lot that I thought it was mine. The lady told me that what it is, that my house on this lot that I've always lived on, that's a structure, and I could build it there, but it's going to be real, you know, just crowded. But then the next one, I have nothing there. I can't build that little.
Which is an extension of the backyard.
Well. It's a 1959 ordinance, it's a land use ordinance. You're not allowed an accessory structure without a primary structure on the property. This prevents us from having just garages on a piece of property, just a swimming pool on a piece of property. You can go down to the appraisal district and have them land tie those two properties and describe it as one property.
Well, that's what I did then. Yeah, I did.
But it's still described as lot fifteen and sixteen, so it needs to be described as lot fifteen or a combination thereof. I can help you with the phone call to the appraisal district, but it is a zoning use. It's not, it's not a building code, it's a zoning, it's a land use.
I'm not, but I've lived here all my life, I work hard here, and you want to build something, then you find out that you can't do it. Another thing, this windstorm.
The windstorm component, you can exempt yourself from the residential component, you yourself can exempt yourself. We have to require it. There's a form that you would fill out with the state that exempts you from the windstorm requirement. That's only acceptable on residential structures. Commercial structures can't exempt themselves. This sounds like a residential structure, so you'd be able to exempt yourself. That's an issue between you and your insurance after you fill out the form and we send it off to the state.
Okay, so I'd have to talk to my insurance about that, because this is a property that's not attached to my house.
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand that, and you say you will help me with this?
Yes, I'll help you with the phone call to the appraisal district. There's a.
Okay, because the lady scared me today.
Well, because that's the standard route. Remember, I tell everybody, there's always a way through the regulation, not around, but through the regulation. And the way through is to get that property description so that it is one piece of property.
Handicap for the golf cart.
Actually, we're working on that. I met with your wife, she was very helpful in describing the, what we're going to be looking for, the stickers on order, Michael? Is the sticker on order? We came up with a security sticker. The issue was having the handicap placard on the golf carts out in the open, people steal them. So the city, we came up with a safety sticker that basically will be put on the placard. It's only going to be, you know, it's only our officers are going to know that's a placard. If DPS or somebody else happens upon you, they're going to give you a ticket, and then you, yeah. So the, they're working. Here's Assistant Chief Perkins. The sticker peels apart when you, when they try to steal it, so it is a safety sticker. No, and then, and then the other issue is, whether it's a mule or a golf cart, the staff knows now, they're going to actually go out, and we are getting new software citywide, so I'll have a picture of your cart now with your plate, so if they try to come in with a.
And it's like I told everybody, I think I mentioned to everybody, if they would enforce that law in Corpus, they get a thousand dollar fine. I know, I know. But can you imagine just ten times?
Well, there's the municipal court. Yeah.
Yeah, but thank you very much.
No, no, and that was one of the things, people think we get, you know, if the fine's two hundred dollars, we get all two hundred dollars. We get like twelve dollars, or whatever the nominal number is. So my question was, who gets all of that thousand dollars? And I haven't researched it enough, but from most of our fines and things, no, the city, it goes to the state. But from that thousand, I don't know how much would be a portion of the city's.
I always thought the city would get that, would help the city, but you learn something every day.
But get with me, and I'll help you with the appraisal district to tie those properties together.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Warren, I'm resident of Ranses Pass. I've been having problems with dogs next door to me, loud, noisy, barking all the time, aggressive behavior, attacking my fence, and shortly, well, back, one of the dogs got out and came over in my yard and attacked my dog. And I've been going through animal control and supervisor, and even had a meeting with the city manager, and I'm looking for the city council to give me some directions or give me some help in solving this problem. I have just overwhelming number of phone calls, I've got pictures of this dog, and one of the dogs was outside for a week without no water, chained to a tree. For two or three days, it was so tight to the tree, it couldn't even get away from the tree. I called C, Animal Control, they came out to the house, they looked around, and they just left. The dog was still there, the water bucket was tipped over with no water. The one up by the house was chained, had water up there, but the little one didn't. And just this last weekend, they came out, I called again, called the police department, Animal Control came out, and the owner of the dog was moving off the leash, and he had picked the bucket up where it was tipped over, the little dog, little, he died into the bucket trying to get water, so thirsty. He was licking the side of the bucket, trying to get the rain. It's been outside for the last week with no shelter in the rain and everything else, and the fellow finally ran up to where the other dog had his bucket and stuck his head in there for about five minutes. I got pictures of media of all this, and I'm not getting any help from the city manager. She told me to file a formal complaint with the court system, but I don't know why I would go through the court system. I'm not filing charges against anybody. I just want the dogs taken care of, and they're very vicious, the one's very vicious, and when he grabs the fence with his mouth and just shakes my chain link fence, and then attacks my dog.
What's your address, Mr. Warren, if I may ask?
My address? Six one seven North Houston Street. It's right on the corner of Prior and Houston. It's a rental house. And it's two pit bulls. There's the female, it's the older one, and then there's the male. They're both sister and brother, but for two different mothers.
Have we checked to see those?
Yes, we've been out to the site on numerous occasions, we've taken reports, we, when the dogs were out, we've taken the dogs, we've had discussions, we have written statements from the property owners saying they're indoor dogs. I've had. I've had, we've done what we can do on our part. Every time we show up, the dogs are not vicious, the dogs are not attacking, even to Paul, our public works director, who followed up as a supervisor over animal control at that time, the dogs were not. Mr. Warren's last account of the dog, there was no broken skin, there was saliva. Talked to him again, well, the dog jumped on my dog, et cetera, et cetera. It was not a vicious attack, Mr. Warren, per our conversation. So that's why I referred him to municipal court, because it is a civil matter between two neighbors.
It was a very vicious attack on my dog.
Did the dog break the skin, or have?
So with the new ordinance that we just passed, because it does dangerous vicious?
We have a vicious dog provision today. If we would have gone out and the dog was vicious to us, or vicious to anybody who approached the dog when we investigated.
The very first visit, they wouldn't go up to the fence because the dog was actually grabbed with his mouth.
There's a background between the owner and the resident and the tenants behind the dogs. There's other issues between the tenant, the owner of that house, and Mr. Warren, and and.
No, there's no other issues. I have no issues with the owner.
The owner has advised, they've had to, gone through several tenants because of similar issues with Mr. Warren, so from my standpoint.
Who's my son? I'd like to see it, because I have no. I don't even know, the owner is a female, and I guess her son is the one that's actually running the house. I still keep in contact, in fact, one of the residents I had still comes over to my house, they've got two little boys that come over and swim in my pool all the time. The only complaint I ever had with one of his residents is when the city shut their water off. They went, turned the water back on, the city came out and took their meter, so then they came over and started stealing water from my house. And that's the only complaint I've ever had from anybody in those, in that house. They also rent the house behind that one, there's been never, no problems with them. They're out there partying late at night. I never called and never said anything, so I don't know where this owner has. Convinced her that I've been. Nothing but a complaint, because I've never complained. I don't even know this guy, I've talked to him like several times. In fact, the last, between the last tenants, they came, they were over there doing some cleaning up in the yard, and he had a guy there, he called one of his friends and came over and they did some trimming at my house, I paid him for it. So I don't know where she's coming up with this.
Who's the owner, Sylvia, do you know?
I don't know the name right off the bat, but we've had discussions with not only the tenant, but the owner. Again, we've paid several visits. I mean, the allegation that we're not doing anything is incorrect, there are several, several, several reports, but every time we go out, the dogs are not. No, the dogs are not acting up.
You have video? You have video on it?
I do, it's on my laptop, but I have my laptop in the drawer.
On one of the occasions when we go out, you know, Mr. Warren's dog isn't licensed either in the city, so we give him the opportunity, we give the other owner the opportunity.
Do you remember on the back, in the dates and times of the pictures?
So that's why, that's why the referral to municipal court.
On a legal standpoint, what can we do about this?
Well, it's a matter of enforcement, if he doesn't want to file charges in municipal court, which he just said he didn't want to do.
I mean, if that's exactly what I have to do, I don't want to do that. I mean, I don't want to press charges against anybody, it was a city ordinance against vicious dogs and nuisance dogs, and these are definitely nuisance and vicious dogs, the female is.
These are actual pictures of the neighbor, right? They're actual pictures?
Actually, those pictures there, the foggy ones, are pictures of their kids, so scared they wouldn't even go in the backyard. You can see the kids right there behind the tree? They wouldn't even go in the backyard with their dogs. But the dogs aren't vicious, right?
So you have to basically go to the municipal court, if you want to go that route?
Maybe what I do, just file charges against the owner?
You'd be speaking to Mr. Howell over there in the corner. That way you get the legal ball rolling and.
Yeah, go to court and continue to put up with it, the choice is yours.
It's a matter of proof, the ordinances that the city has, they're not going to be in the process.
Like I said.
That's what our beings, but someone has got to file charges on these people. If the, if the humane officer's going out there and not seeing anything when they're there.
Okay, the fact that the dog was out there for over a week with no water, the animal control officers came out there, they seen the bucket was tipped over, but yet they did nothing. I got pictures before they got there, a picture after they got there, and there's still no water. And the animal control officer walked away, don't get back in the first one.
The control officer, do they have permission to be going to people's yard to put water or not? I mean, I'm just asking.
We shouldn't be, we don't have the right of entry. Just like that, I mean, there. CJ, would you, you want to address at all any of what you've seen? We have written documentation of, you know, every single time we make contact with Mr. Warren. He's right, he's been up here. My last conversation was, it is, at this point, it's a civil matter between two neighbors because we don't witness it every time we go out.
Excuse me, my last conversation, when I called her to talk to her, to ask her what we could do about it, she wouldn't even call me back, she wouldn't talk to me, she had her secretary call me, told me to take it and file a formal complaint with the board. Asked her secretary then, what's that mean? I don't know anything about this. I never did this before. This is the first time I'm in a house, I've owned this house for two years, I've never been like this. I lived in an RV, and I've never had a situation like this, so I asked her, what is the process? What do I have to do? What do I do right now? And her secretary was like, I don't know, I'm just passing the word on.
We asked you to call the court. We asked you to call the court and get information for what it would take to file.
No, nobody asked me to do that.
We never told you to go to court?
She told me to take a formal complaint to the court.
Well, that's, what's so hard to understand about that? Either you take it to the court, or you split it, or put up with the dogs, it's simple as that, you got two choices, do nothing or go to court. It's cut and dry, it's simple as that. Yeah, we're spending a lot of time, we're spending a lot of time when all you got to do is go to the court and file, file the charge.
Well, it's a matter of proof when you get to court, so.
You have it there in the picture, so appreciate it. I'm sure Mr. Howell will be happy to help you whenever ready. That's our judge over there. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? What's your name?
My name is Carol Salinas, and I'm a resident of the municipal court. Speaking with you gentlemen and ladies. I would like to comment on what Mr. Flores said about wanting to put that structure on the adjacent property. I have some friends that.